Mayor, you can proceed.
Thank you, Max. Good morning, everybody. It is Wednesday, May 19th, 2021. This is a virtual special meeting of the City of Rehoboth Beach Commissioners. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 10:00 a.m. on the dot. Thank you for being here. We'd like to do a roll call to start off with. Commissioner Susan Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Dick Byrne.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Pat Kaluzi.
Here.
Commissioner Jay Legree.
Here.
Commissioner Ed Stranowski.
Good morning here.
And the mayor, Stan Mills, is here. We have a full complement when we are able to formally conduct business. Thank you all for being here. I'd also like to thank all those online that are watching us today. The purpose of this special meeting is for the potential reconsideration of the June 14th, 2021 hearing date for the Rehoboth Clear Space Spotlight Appeals. This meeting is modeled after the March 18th meeting. We also reconsidered the initial April 8th hearing date. This meeting is largely administrative. There is no public comment, including from the parties. We do have available online and accessible our correspondence from both the parties as well as constituents. So if you go to our online portal, seek out the agenda for today, you should be able to access all the correspondence. With that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our Board of Commissioners Solicitor, Max Walton. You recall Glenn Mandalis is representing the Planning Commission, and so we've hired Special Counsel Max Walton to work with us on this Clear Space issue. Max, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm probably going to give a little bit of a monologue this morning just to make sure that the commissioners and the public know it's sort of a timeline and a request. So as the commissioners are well aware, last fall, there was an approval by the Planning Commission. After that approval was granted, there was an appeal to the commissioners, and the commissioners determined that the matter should be remanded to the Planning Commission for Clear Space and Rehoboth Spotlight. Following that, Planning Commission meetings were held in January and February of this year. There was an approval. On March the 12th, there were two appeals filed, and they were signed by 63 people, as I recall, one for the -- and the two appeals were one for the Rehoboth Spotlight and for Clear Space. And so today, I'm just going to refer to those two appeals as one, and we're just going to call them Clear Space. So -- and as you may recall, those appeals were filed on March the 12th, and largely due to my trial schedule, and I will say that I just got out of trial at 4:00 yesterday, but largely due to my trial schedule, we held a meeting on March the 12th to set a date for the hearing for Clear Space Appeals. And initially, that date was set for April the 8th, and notification was provided to the parties. On March 15th, there was a request for a postponement of the April 8th hearing date, as you may recall, and the allegation at that time was that the timeframe for filing the written submissions was too short, and the appellant didn't have enough time to prepare the record and prepare their written submission. There was a special meet based upon having an April 8th hearing date, excuse me, because as the commissioners are aware, opening submissions by code have to be submitted 21 days in advance. So there was a special meeting held on March the 18th to decide whether or not to grant the continuance of the April 8th hearing date. And as you may recall, there was quite a discussion on the record relating to that date, because I said that I was not available until early June at the earliest, based upon what I had going on. The mayor indicated, and the commissioners decided that they weren't going to get somebody else to handle the hearing. They wouldn't be to handle it, so we set it for June the 14th. On May the 6th, I received a letter from Carol Weddy, who is in the office of Cootenay Taylor, and she works for Mr. Jeff Goddess, and there was a request for a continuance of the June 14th date and the May 24 submission date. Mr. Goddess had been considering entering his appearance in the matter on behalf of the appellant, but indicated clearly in that letter that he was not going to enter his appearance due to some personal issues. So what did I do? I was kind of in the middle of a trial, so I called Ms. Weddy, and I informed her that ultimately, we couldn't act on her letter of a continuance because it wasn't made by a party, and it wasn't made by an attorney representing any of the parties. So on May the 10th, so four days later, the mayor and commissioners received a continuance request from an appellant, Winn Atchenbaum, requesting a continuance of the June 14th hearing to allow the appellant's time to retain new counsel and to assist them in the written submission. That was opposed, and you guys have all of this correspondence. That was opposed by Mr. Forston, acting on behalf of Clear Space. I'm not going to go through the parties' arguments relating to that, because you guys already have them. So that was submitted on May the 10th. On May the 12th, Luke Metta Esquire entered his appearance on behalf of the appellant, and he also requested a continuance of the June 14th hearing date. And then there was correspondence from Mr. Forston relating to the opposition to the request for a continuance. So what did I do? I emailed them, the parties, and I said, if you all can functionally, and I'm sure my note is in the record, I said, if you guys can reach an agreement on the submissions or change of dates or anything like that, I'm pretty sure that the commissioners would go along with an agreement of all the parties. And ultimately, there has not been an agreement. There was correspondence also received from Mr. Mandalis stating that the Planning Commission had not yet approved the minutes. It's my understanding, although I wasn't in trial, that the Planning Commission was supposed to meet yesterday to approve the minutes. Mr. Metta has also stated that he certainly wants the 30-day continuance for the reasons stated in his letter, and Clear Space is in opposition to the request for a continuance. So functionally, as of today, there is no agreement between the parties, so we don't have to worry about approving an agreement between the parties, as far as I'm aware, right? And so to me, this is really sort of a binary issue. We have a hearing date set. The code sets forth the dates for when submissions are required 21 days in advance. The date of the hearing is June the 14th, so the commissioner's decision really is pretty simple, whether or not you want to postpone the hearing to a later date to allow additional time for the written submissions, or to allow additional time for the hearing, or not. That's really it. So it's, we keep the date the same, or we set a new date. There has been some discussion amongst some of the correspondence relating to whether or not the appeal has to be held within the 60 days. And I'm going to read Section 236-6, Appeals and Considerations, Subsection A1. It says, "Upon receipt of the required written notice of appeal, the commissioner shall schedule an appeal hearing within 60 days or soon thereafter as practical." So I've always struggled a little bit with that language, and I've taken the position that, and I believe it's right, that the commissioners only need to schedule the hearing within 60 days. I think Preston has allowed it. If the hearing was intended to be done within 60 days, I would have expected language, and I'm reading from 7 Delaware Code 7007 relating to the State Industrial Control Board. It says, "The State Coastal Zone Industrial Control Board must hold a hearing and render its decision in the form of an order within 60 days following receipt of the appeal notification." So it's my view, and that's not, that's subject to argument. Obviously, it's a little ambiguous in the code, I would say, but ultimately, I am of the opinion that you, if you show desire based upon the facts and circumstances, believe that a continuance is in order. I believe that you may grant that continuance. So I just wanted to be clear about that. And so ultimately, I've given you the timeline. You have the correspondence of parties. And again, I think this is a binary issue. It's pretty straightforward. We keep the hearing date that we have, or we set a new one, and then the dates will get ticked off from there for the submission times. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to give such a long monologue this morning, but I did want to make sure that the history was set forth on the record and for the commissioners to make sure that they remember the applicable dates. Does anyone have any questions?
Let me just interject something before we start discussion and questions. And I wanted to let you know, I pulled Max Walton ahead of time such that, trying to ascertain his availability, and he does have availability if we chose to extend the hearing date by one week, by two weeks, by three weeks, or four weeks. After that, I believe he has a challenging schedule, but certain days of each of the one, two, three, and four weeks after the June 14th meeting are available. So I just wanted to get that on the table first. With that, we'll go to any questions, and before we go to discussion, questions of Max Walton. Jay Legree, Commissioner Legree, you had your hand up first.
You answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stranowski?
Yes, Max, can you -- I missed writing it down. The date that we were, the date that was scheduled for the hearing on March 12th, what was that date, the hearing date that we scheduled at that time?
Commissioner, by my notes, that was set for April the 8th, and that comports with my schedule, because my trial started on April the 10th, that I've been in ever since. So I know we were trying to get it in before that trial.
Okay. And can you just clarify? You mentioned a letter from Mr. Mandalis on behalf of the Planning Commission, which I don't have in the correspondence. Did you say that the Planning Commission was opposed or were amendable to the 30-day extension?
They basically took the planning commission. I don't have Mr. Mandalis's note in front of me, so I'm doing this by memory, but the Planning Commission took really no position functionally. And also, Mr. Mandalis was informing the parties at that time that there was no approved minutes of the Planning Commission, but it's my understanding that the Planning Commission was supposed to hold a special meeting yesterday to approve the minutes. I did not have an opportunity to check on that.
These are all the questions I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we get into discussion for Mr. Walton? Commissioner Kaluzi, unmute yourself there.
One more question. Max, I think you believe that, I believe you said that Mr. Met --
Luke Metta.
Sorry?
Pronounced Luke Metta.
Oh, Metta. Okay, thank you. May 12th is when he started appeared for now for his client. That was May 12th?
Yes, Commissioner, according to my notes here, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, we'll go to discussion. Being mindful that Max Walton really gave us two options. One is to stay the course, in which case, the hearing date remains June 14th, and the established deadlines for submittals is already established. And the second choice is to offer an extension. And if we go that route, then obviously, we would need to identify whether the duration of the extension. I'll open it up for discussion.
I'm willing to start off with my thoughts, Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
A few things strike me that is hard for me to digest, and that is, you know, as of the letter dated May 6th, Mr. Goddess never actually entered appearance in this matter. It was clear that the wording in that letter, he was considering taking on representation, not that he had taken on representation of the appellant. So that strikes me a little bit as being hard to digest to even consider a continuance, with the fact that, you know, this would be the second continuance granted, which I, and it would be more than three months from the initial date scheduled, which I don't think is in the spirit of the code, and as I think matters like this should be expedited, as time is costing everyone a lot of money and other strains. You know, and I just, it's really hard for me to consider this, when even if you take one of the appellant's letter dated on May 10th, they entered into what I guess they believe was a working relationship, even though it doesn't sound that way from Carol Weddy's email of June 6th, that they consciously knew that they were not going to be able to start working on this a month later on April 22nd. It just seems like really poor planning and organization on the plan of on the part of the appellant, and I'm just not inclined to grant a continuance on that reason. You know, the fact that they were notified on May 6th, why it took four days for then an appellant to reach us, to ask for the continuance, it just seems like a lot of wasted time when time was of the essence. However, for that reason, I'm not inclined to. But what does bother me is the fact that not until yesterday, there were meeting minutes approved by the Planning Commission. That bothers me.
I'm sorry. Let me interrupt. The meeting minutes, as I understand, are not approved yet.
They are not.
That was my understanding as of last night. They are not yet approved.
I had a different understanding of that. So I think if we could get clarification on that point now, that would be helpful.
Ann Womack, are you available online?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Can you address, you know, I may not have read correctly by watching the meeting, but are the minutes, three sets of minutes in front of the Planning Commission, approved?
The minutes were approved with changes to be made.
Well, in the process of, well, to me, that seems contradictory. I don't know how you can approve minutes with changes to be made. So I guess that's why I made the assumption that they're not yet approved.
Well, the Planning Commission actually did take a vote to approve the minutes, but they said that there were further changes to be made.
Proved minutes, but said there's further minutes to be changed. I'm going to leave it at that, Commissioner Stranowski, so I don't know the right answer to that.
All right. If I could just finish my thoughts on that. So, you know, that concerns me, and it bothers me that the matter of approving the minutes wasn't made with more urgency, as this is a time-sensitive thing. However, you know, the appellant are playing by, I'm sorry, the applicant is playing by the same rules. They're not complaining that the minutes aren't approved yet, or weren't approved until yesterday. And I would think that the more accurate place to get the record from is the live meeting, which was immediately available after each of those meetings. So in thinking about that further, I'm not inclined to grant a continuance on that one either. However, I'd like Max's opinion on having a hearing like this and what is considered the record. And, you know, is it the live stream? Is it the meeting minutes? I'd like some input from him without putting us in an awkward position.
So I'd just like to make clear one issue before I answer your question, Commissioner.
Sure.
I received the letter on May the 6th from Ms. Weddy. I can't swear on a Bible whether or not I called her on Friday the 7th, or I believe I called her on Friday the 7th, but it could have been after that. It could have been the 10th. I just don't know. So I want to make clear, I made a telephone call, but I just don't remember exactly what date I'd made it after that, but I believe it was on the 7th. Back to the record, the record is everything that is in the live stream, everything that was presented to the Planning Commission. Generally, the record does include the minutes of the meeting. If there's a discrepancy between the minutes and the actual testimony, the testimony would then prove out.
Well, that goes to my point, then, that I believe enough information was made available up until this point. Those are my thoughts, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, first of all, Commissioner Stranowski, I'm very glad you brought that up about the minutes, because this has been perplexing to me since last Friday. They were on the agenda to be approved last Friday, and as we all know, they were not. In fact, the reason they weren't on the agenda till last Friday is the Planning Commission simply hasn't met since February. So they didn't feel the need to, you know, to call a meeting to move on with these. So Friday was going to be the day they were approved, and instead, they postponed it because there were apparently some changes that needed to be made, and they met yesterday. And while they did approve them, they specifically said that the city secretary is not getting the approved minutes until at least today. And then, it's highly unusual, at least in my experience, for there to be changes. So those changes will have to be vetted, and who knows when they're going to be part of the portal. But here we are, four days before the briefings are due, and I can't believe, I mean, to me, without the final approved minutes, we are all, all the parties are flying blind. Because unlike the record that has all of the documents, it's the minutes that spell out the rationale and the thought process. And frankly, the delay and the changes kind of speak to the complexity and the controversy surrounding this project. So on that basis alone, I think there's a real issue with timing. And I have some other thoughts about the 30-day component of the delay, but I'm going to stop there for a minute and come back to that, if you don't mind, in case there are other comments about the minutes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes, just, I think for clarification in listening to the meeting, the continuation of Planning Commission meeting on Thursday or Tuesday, the minutes, they did vote upon them, but the secretary of the Planning Commission was then to update the changes, mostly grammatical or some just word interpretation, then get them to the city secretary for posting to the website. And as of this morning, they have not been posted. They were voted on and approved at the continuation of the meeting yesterday afternoon, but they have not been posted or made available to the public as of yet.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Legree?
I too wondered what the changes were, and I don't know right now. I watched the previous meeting, and it seemed like they were significant, because they wanted to review, they wanted to finish their contemplation of the minutes. And then yesterday, suddenly it was, everything was fine, and they had a few minor changes that hadn't been posted. If I was a lawyer who was trying to get all this straightened out, I'd be pulling my hair out right now. I don't know where we are, and I cannot, right now, I cannot deny a continuation. I just, in my mind, I can't. It's, first off, I can't blame anybody for having bypass surgery. Secondly, I just, I can't deny the continuation if I can't figure it all out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kaluzi?
Yes, as far as the minutes go, as I understand it, they were approved with the changes. So the changes were approved. So the minutes were approved. They just haven't been published. So yes, maybe they haven't been published, but that should not, in my opinion, keep anyone from being able to see those minutes, what, 24 hours later, to use as they move forward if it's necessary. And as Max Walton has said, the public testimony is the, not overrules, but is, I guess that's the word, really, overrules the minutes. That's what we should be looking at in terms of making some decisions. So I would agree with Commissioner Stranowski, and I see that both sides have had plenty of time to review the conversations and the record that has been recorded. That video has been available to them since the beginning. And that's the only comment I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gossett?
Thank you. Just to add a little more information to that, I pulled some text from previous meetings, and just to share with you, at the May 14th meeting, this is regarding the minutes, the Planning Commission chair stated, and I quote, "The minutes contain a lot of information in amazing detail and are very important to stakeholders in the Clear Space-Rehoboth Spotlight matter." He asked for more time to review the minutes, as other PC members also asked for additional time to review the minutes. Additionally, the Planning Commission counsel, Mr. Mandalis, stated, quote, "The minutes are relevant and helpful in drafting the submission." So again, this is from the Planning Commission and also Planning Commission's counsel of the validity of the minutes. We're not talking about live streaming, trying to pull it all together, watching a video, if you will, but the actual written record of the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, we've gotten a few viewpoints about staying the course, leaving it as it is. We've got a few opinions on perhaps giving an extension without a duration. I am leaning toward giving a two-week extension. If you recall earlier, Council for Clear Space had a medical problem, and we deferred two weeks. I believe that we could do the same without doing any harm to anybody. I do believe that the attorney for the appellant intended to represent them. I think it's an unfortunate unplanned event that there was a medical emergency and that they had to come and ask for the time extension. Again, I think it's fair to go for the two-week extension. I'm not sold on a three- or four-week extension at this point. As far as the minutes go, I think my view of the minutes tends to be through a freedom of information process, where minutes are designed so that people don't have process where minutes are designed so that people don't have to listen to the whole tape. That they are condensed versions of the meetings. However, in this case, they are summaries. And I think that for the most accurate representation, that somebody should go back and transcribe or listen to the meeting video and audio. So, so you know where I stand. If we exhaust discussion, then I would entertain a motion from somebody. Commissioner Byrne, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And I appreciate the comments that you just made. You know, the word fairness has come out a lot, both in the correspondence and in a number of the comments made already this morning. And I think it is about fairness, fairness to the community, both the segmented community, meaning the applicants, the appellants. But but I think, very importantly, to the broader community, that we owe it to our broader community to get on with this, that a decision gets made in fairness to everyone and that we can move ahead. There is a real sense out there that that all of the parties and us, very much included, have been kind of kicking the can down the road, so to speak, and not getting to a decision that I think needs needs to be made in the name of fairness. And I think, you know, there's no scientific answer to whether it should be a thirty-day delay or a couple-of-day delay. So I think, from my perspective, a compromise is in order. And I would, I'd be willing to make make a motion that we provide a ten-day or at most a fourteen-day extension. We're firm with it. We settle it and we get on with this on the calendar and get a decision made that is that is fair. And then we stay on the record with the information. There's not new information out there. People can talk about voluminous amounts of information, but it's not growing amounts of information. The information has been there, it's been on the record for quite some time. So I'm certainly supportive of a of a of a compromise that would go perhaps ten days. I'm not in favor of a three or four-week extension. Thanks, Mayor.
Commissioner, you mentioned possibly making a motion to extend the the appeal hearing date to ten, ten days to fourteen days. Let me suggest that somebody add these, this timeframe, or maybe you should just give a date. The week of June, the last week in June, the availability is the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. So I don't know if you want to count days or just say if you make a motion to redirect the appeal hearing date to June twenty-ninth or June thirtieth.
Mayor, I move that we move the hearing date from June fourteenth to Tuesday, June twenty-ninth.
Okay, I'm just, I'm I'm double checking. Tuesdays usually are special COVID meetings, but I think I think this this will take precedent over that. So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Byrne and a second by Commissioner Shrinowski to redirect the Clearspace Appeal Hearing Date from June fourteenth to June twenty-ninth. We'll say at the same times, that'd be ten AM. Is there further discussion?
Can I offer an amendment to that date?
Sure.
I would ask that we make it the twenty-eighth.
Well, we've got Board of Adjustment, we've got Parks and Shade Tree Commission, so that's that's challenging. And that's why I didn't pick it.
What about the previous Thursday, then? That would be, what, ten days, then? Is that, what's our schedule there?
That would be available. Yeah, that would be available.
I would offer June twenty-fourth as an amendment.
Dick, Dick, I don't know how we meant here. Dick, do you accept?
Yeah, I take that as a as a friendly amendment. Amendment, I think it's key that all of us, the seven of us are available, including the attorneys for the various parties. So that seems to be key to whether it's the twenty-fourth or the or the twenty-ninth.
Mayor, Mayor, if I if I may.
Yeah, well, we've got Susan Gay, Gossett, and Shrinowski and Legray. So let's go ahead in that order. Continue discussion. Commissioner Gay.
Patrick spoke first. Let let him go. Go ahead and I'll
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Gossett.
Sure, I'm just curious and or just lay out this additional data in my mind. The earlier continuance, when the attorney was, became ill, was a two-week attorney or two-week extension. And apparently that was done internally. There was no discussion among the mayor and commissioners about extending the date whatsoever. It just sort of happened. We have a formal request for a thirty-day extension because, again, of a medical situation that we are asked to respond to. So I'm just not clear how we can automatically extend two weeks internally without a formal request, but then get a formal request of thirty days and reduce it from fifteen and now to ten. So I I could not support a ten-day, and I have real difficulty supporting the fifteen-day extension. I think we should honor the request that was formally presented. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gay, please.
I'll go now, yeah. And I, you know, following up on that, I tend to agree. And let me back up and and give some more dates that may be relevant. First of all, Max, I really appreciate that the history you gave, especially the clarification of what it means in the code to schedule within sixty days rather than hear the appeal in sixty days. I found that very comforting because the words I picked up on in the code were sixty days or as soon thereafter is practical. And I really took that to mean that that builds in the human component. You know, I mean, it's it's hard to predict schedules, as we've seen here earlier. And it's certainly impossible to know when there is a medical emergency. So, in fact, and several people have already mentioned that in the first appeal, there was an interruption with a medical emergency that added two weeks to the schedule. But in this case, you know, when we met back in March to reschedule that April date, the appellants didn't ask for June. I think they would have been fine, I guess, with May, they just wanted their sixty days. It was because of Max Walton's schedule that we had to go from May to June. So that was essentially a full thirty-day delay there because of, again, the human component, his schedule. So on the record, we've got a thirty-day delay. And we've got a two-week delay that have already occurred, not with the same appeal, but as examples. By comparison, not one appeal of the planning mission has ever been done anywhere close to sixty days. The beach walk appeal was ten months. And then after the decision was made at the commissioner level, it's been in court for three and a half years. So, I mean, I don't want to delay anywhere close to that timeframe. And I want to do something expeditiously that would would give us a solution as soon as possible. But I am concerned about creating an appealable condition that's going to tie this case up for years. So I, you know, to me, a win-win would be to grant the thirty-day extension because it meets the goal of timeliness and it doesn't provide undue delay. So that's that's kind of where I come out, again, based on the history of other appeals and the human component.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shrinowski? Oh, I'm sorry, Max Walton, please.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to respond to something Commissioner Gay said. That's my interpretation. I will guarantee you could hear a different interpretation. That that section is a little ambiguous, but that is my interpretation of the section.
Thank you. Thank you, Max. Commissioner Shrinowski.
I I think Commissioner Legray had his hand up first. He can go if he'd like.
Commissioner, well, that's not not true, but go ahead, Commissioner Legray.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm agreeing with with Gossett and Gay. I think, and as I, I'm just repeating what I said a little while ago. I mean, this this project is going to take many, many months to complete. And to say that ten days or fourteen days or whatever it is on the on the beginning is going to create undue hardship for the cost of materials or the ability to to secure funding is is just suspicious argument, in my opinion. So I'm I'm with Gossett and Gay. I'm I'm ready for a thirty-day continuance. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shrinowski.
Yeah, one, I I'd like to be clear that the two, the two-week and the thirty-day, I guess, delays or extensions, however you want to call them, they were only because of Max's schedule. That's the only reason that it was delayed or it was scheduled in that manner. I I believe that both parties have had sufficient time to gather the information. You know, as I said before, the 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 appellants made a conscious decision to enter or think that they were agreeing to have representation, knowing that that lawyer could not even start working on it for a month. I just I just don't think it's fair to the community, to the to the applicant, to us and our time. And so on the grounds of of asking for an extension based on them having to switch attorneys, I really believe it was poor planning and organization. And I would not grant any extension for that reason. However, as I stated, I I am willing to do a compromise because the meeting minutes are not yet available. And I think, Mayor, what you suggested, the ten days, two weeks, is a good compromise. And that's what I'm willing to to support.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, you know, I I gave my spiel earlier and I stand by it. I believe the two-week timeframe is valid for the reasons I gave earlier. That puts it for June twenty-ninth through thirtieth, so I'm I'm pretty stuck on those days. I'm not, I'm not as amenable to going to three weeks, maybe, but definitely not thirty days. Commissioner Legray.
My hand should have gone down. I I I'm I'm ready to to vote on Commissioner Kaluzi's amendment.
Okay, so we've got
My amendment and let me just ask Commissioner Kaluzi, she made a friendly amendment, and you're right, Jay, that we do have a friendly amendment on the floor.
So I I changed it from the twenty-ninth to the twenty-fourth. I'm also happy to do the thirtieth. I just cannot do the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Okay, then, I'm going to accept a friendly amendment to move it to June thirtieth. And we need to see if Commissioner Shrinowski, who made the second.
I agree with the
All right, so in front of us then, we have a motion by Commissioner Byrne, seconded by Commissioner Shrinowski to redirect the hearing date for the Clearspace Appeals, plural, from ten AM, June fourteenth to ten AM, Wednesday, June thirtieth. Is there any further discussion, Commissioner Kaluzi?
No, that was
That's your old, okay, we'll take your hand down, Commissioner Gay.
Yeah, I just had one other question, which is, we seem to not have resolved the issue yet of when the minutes are going to be made available. They have not yet been submitted to the city. So we really don't know when the, and I I don't want to be back here changing dates again. And so frankly, to me, that was, I was, I'll be honest, I was thinking of a couple of weeks until yesterday, when this whole thing with the minutes happened. And I guess I, to me, that was like icing on the cake. I don't want to be back here. I don't, I don't want to be in a position that, oh, my God, it's a week from now, the the briefs are due, and they still don't have any minutes, and then have to address this all over again. So that's why, I guess, I was looking at at picking a timeframe that we would not, under any circumstances, have to change again, barring some other
Well, as you know, the preparation and approval of minutes and making them available to the public is not under our jurisdiction. That would be under the planning commission. So therefore, can't answer your question, Commissioner Gay. It just can't be, it can't be answered. And to even say definitively that they would be ready if we granted a thirty-day extension, I think would be sticking our necks out also, because we just don't know. And, you know, you heard my position earlier, that while the minutes are very valuable, there's also the audio and video that is available that they could start on while they're waiting for the for the minutes. Commissioner Gossett.
I, by your own comments, Mayor, there's, you know, an element here that is still unknown. And that's the the publication of the minutes. I don't see how we can consciously make a decision on setting a date when we really don't know when the 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 minutes, the the record of the meeting, will be published. I I just don't think that is prudent to to make a decision based on on something we don't know. And has been stated by the Planning Commissioners Council themselves and the Chair of the Planning Commission that the minutes are a very critical part of this decision. And the planning commission themselves delayed by five days reviewing and approving the minutes. And still, they, quote, "have been approved but not been published yet." So I just think it's, it is a very questionable action that we take based on not available data.
Thank you. Well, each one of us, I guess, is going to have to reflect on that, and our vote will likely reflect our feelings on that, Commissioner. Commissioner Shrinowski.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to point out, I mean, it was mentioned that the secretary of the planning commission would have the minutes over to Anne sometime today. And I think we just have to put some faith that, you know, they will follow through on what they said they would do.
Thank you.
And we know how, we know how well Anne does her job, so I'm sure they will be posted soon after she receives them.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaluzi.
Yeah, so I, just a clarification, my understanding is the minutes were approved, just not published. And I think what I understood from Anne Womack just earlier, that as soon as she gets them, they will be published. So I think that it's kind of a moot point, in my opinion, that they that, they actually have been approved with the changes, and the changes just need to be published. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I don't see any more questions from the commissioners, so I'll call the question. I'm going to do a roll call vote. If you recall, the motion on the floor is to redirect the Clearspace hearings from ten AM, June fourteenth to ten AM, June thirtieth. Period. With that, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Susan Gay.
Come back to me, please.
Okay, Commissioner Richard Byrne.
Aye.
Commissioner Pat Kaluzi.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett.
I vote no, and and I just want to share my thoughts on that reasoning is, I don't think we're here to discuss the merits or the site plan or the value of Clearspace to Rehoboth Beach. We all feel, I think, the majority of us feel that Clearspace is a very great asset to the city. And what we're here to judge whether the request of the continuance is practical and reasonable. We're here to carefully deliberate and request the continuance. You know, Council for Clearspace has never stated the full wording of the statute that was referred to earlier. It seems to always left off the term "or as soon as practical." You know, with the courtesy I've been given to Clearspace due to health issues of their council and a request from the appellants due to health from their council, impartiality demands that we grant the requested continuance request of thirty days. Also, Clearspace has offered no concrete evidence that they, the delay would cause them irreparable harm and have offered only speculation. Even if they had, we're not here, and it's not our job, to respond to a forecast, a construction cost, or fundraising efforts. I still believe that we need the, to honor the request that was given or requested by the appellants of the thirty days. Again, as I mentioned earlier, there was an internal extension of thirty, of two weeks, based on another health issue, and then another extension based on internal scheduling. So we have a formal request ahead of us, before us, and I think we should honor that as opposed to just do an internal change, as has been done on two other occasions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Chernowski?
I vote aye. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Legree?
I vote no. The, the appellant have not seen the official transcript. That was said to be very informative and necessary four days ago. So they haven't had a chance yet, so I, I vote no against this extension. That's, that's the worst.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gay, do you want to go? You want me to go?
No, 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 I, I will. And I'm going to vote no as well, and I, and I just, I want to say that I am very concerned about creating conditions that will drag this case on for a long time. I mean, that is really the reason here. I mean, the icing on the cake is the unavailability of the minutes. I would have been prepared to do some compromise before that, but you put, you put that together. There's a perfectly reasonable, happens all the time, 30-day extension. They're not asking for 60, they're asking for 30, and frankly, what we have on the table, the difference between what they're asking and what we're voting on is like 12 days now. So we got it down to a 12-day variance. And, and I think, I don't want to see this case drag on because we couldn't grant an additional 12 days. So I can't, I'm nervous about that, and I can't support it for that reason.
Well, thank you, and I, and I appreciate your opinions on that. I, I don't take this lightly. It's actually a hard decision for me, but for the reasons stated earlier, I do vote yes for the motion. And so the motion carries that the June 14th hearing will be redirected to June 20, June 30th at 10:00 a.m. If there's no further comments in this meeting, Commissioner Legree?
Yeah, the, there was discussion among the, among the lawyers about how many days they would grant for the initial, for the submission of documents. I'm assuming now that we're going to go to 21 days, which means that the appellant must submit their documents by 9 June.
They, they have to follow the code, correct? Max Walton?
That's correct. And just to be clear, if there was going to be a changing of anything in the code with respect to dates or shortening the briefing schedules, that would have to be done by some sort of stipulation, because there wasn't a stipulation, they just have to follow the code. So opening briefs, if anybody wants to submit them, has to be 21 days before the hearing.
So just to, just to confirm, the hearing date is set for June 30th at 10:00 a.m. Correct?
Yes.
And submittal is then June 8th or June 9th by close of business?
That's correct, if that's 21 days before.
I'm, I'm asking the question, you're the attorney.
Yeah, I'm just, it's 21 days before by the close of business, 21 days before the start of the year.
Looks like June 3rd, what'd you come up with, Patrick? June 3rd?
June 9th, I believe, but I would think the attorney is the one that needs to confirm that, please.
I'm going to, I'm going to do my little math right now, just to make sure I got it right, okay?
21, yeah.
Looking at the calendar, that looks right.
That's right, 21 days does appear to be the ninth.
So close of business on June 9th?
Correct.
And then the responses are seven days before the hearing?
I quote, "seven days," that would be June the 23rd.
So the key dates are the 9th and the 23rd, in addition to the 30th?
Correct.
Okay.
All righty, if there's no further questions?
I'm sorry, I have one other question.
Go ahead.
Do, do we determine, is this going to be a virtual or an in-person hearing?
In person, yeah.
All our meetings starting in June are, are in-person.
I just want to confirm that, that's all, because of all attorneys and their schedules, et cetera, to be in-person versus Zoom may present a problem. So it's established now that it will be an in-person meeting on June 30th in City Hall at 10:00 a.m.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, then this meeting is adjourned at 10:54 a.m. Thank you very much.